Call to order the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting Tuesday of September 3rd, 2019. Let's please stand for silence in the pledge, please. Please point me.
Let your allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, due to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Hope everybody had a nice, safe weekend. Good we have roll call, Mr. President.
Mr. Kane.
Here.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Ms. Reagan.
Present.
Mr. Corr.
Here.
And I believe Becky is here from Soil and Water. We want to, how we want to handle this.
Becky Dory with Delaware County Soil and Water Conservation District, 3641 North Briarwood, Muncie. I have with me John Newby. He is our appointed supervisor for the next three years, and he just needs to be sworn in.
And how many years John's been out there all the time now?
Nine or ten, yeah.
Nine or ten. Well, John, if you want to come forward, I'll swear you in. My pleasure. I know you've helped us many years, and this is going to be a new title for you, right?
No, it's just a reappointment.
Oh, reappointment. Okay. State your name, please.
John Newby.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Indiana, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office supervisor of Delaware County Soil and Water Conservation District, upon which you are now about to enter? If so, okay. Well, thank you so much for your responsibility, and let's have a handshake and turn around to the camera so I can get your face. If anybody has any grave issue, call Becky and John.
That's right.
Out in the camp.
Get rid of those dams, too.
Yes.
The dams are on their way out.
Yes. Okay. Approval amendments, please.
Foot move, second.
Motion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Okay. We have a few contracts and agreement today. First, the highway handbook. Would like to speak on that, I have, John.
The Highway Department, because of its unique structure and setup, has their own handbook concerning how we have used, it's patterned after the county's handbook, and it really mirrors the county's handbook except for certain peculiarities to the county highway department. So I would recommend that the Commissioners approve and adopt this handbook for discipline of the highway department and use for personnel issues out there.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you very much. Okay. V.I.S. Emily, thank you.
Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. This is an agreement for the recording equipment for 4D Core for the new facility. They were able to take it out of the incentive money, so that you guys don't have to cover that. We're going to go ahead and get it now, but store it here until they're ready to install that at the new facility. So I just need the approval, so I can pay half of that and get it shipped here.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Okay. Variance request.
Good morning, Commissioners. I submitted you a letter from Brumball Engineering Survey. They are requesting a variance for Progress Rail Services. Everything has been submitted to our engineer for review, and he supports the request. So I just need your approval.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Bridge 161.
The LPA consulting contract, Endo has requested that we separate the line item that says "right away buying and negotiations" from the original contract. So that's why you are seeing a new LPA consulting contract just for those services. It's not an additional cost or anything, it's just a formality.
Language.
I'll make a motion, we approve the LPA consulting contract.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Angie, you want to kind of fill us in on the public hearing we had up there? We're talking about Bridge 161.
We had a public hearing. Sherry was in attendance, and a few residents attended the meeting. They stated their comments. That's what the public hearing was for, to be submitted into the environmental. People were concerned about speeding once the bridge was open. That was kind of one of the big concerns. Another neighbor was concerned about people trespassing on his property. I guess a lot of people are wanting to come in and watch off of his property at nighttime, causing him problems. But that was really only two things I could think of.
It has to make the speeding because we're taking the curve out. And when school's out, so maybe we'll have to work with the Sheriff Department, because they claim by the time they're down to that bridge.
Right. It'd be nice if maybe an officer could be there when school lets out.
Yeah, do some spot checking or something. John, that does bring up something about the canoe. How, with canoeing, which is very popular now, kayaking, can we make a dusk to dawn or dawn to dusk recreation or something?
I'd have to look at that, because I don't know what role the DNR plays, since once they get on the water, they become kind of the DR jurisdiction.
If you could check into that.
Yep, sure.
Okay. And then we have another contract, 161.
This is the supplemental with the engineering firm removing the land for buying and negotiations. But if you recall, this bridge, the design started with a different engineering firm. And they were, their whole team was evaluating the design and thought it was kind of overdesigned.
Excessive.
Yeah, and they believed they could save over $60,000, $70,000. So that's why there's a $5,000 to do the redesign. I'd like to enter approval on that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Recommendation for ministrating settlement.
This is on a purchase of some land, I believe it is, out for the, I think in the trails area. You all received a memo from VS Engineering, which is the engineering firm for the, hired by the Redevelopment Commission, for some trails out south of town. The settlement is for $12,500, I think, for four acres. The land was valued at between $18,000 and $19,000 an acre. So this is a request to, total compensation, $16,000, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the raisin.
Yeah, $16,000.
Yeah, the $12,000 was our minimum, but.
Right.
It'd be easier to settle instead of go to litigation.
Correct.
So do I hear a recommendation?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Agreement for contractual service. Mark, move.
This is an agreement that I'd like to have the Commissioners put in place to allow me to continue to pay Steve Minnick, our building commissioner, who is resigning, but it would allow me to pay him under this agreement, so he would continue on until I am able to fill the position, the new full-time position that County Council has agreed to create. And Steve has agreed to stay on if he's paid at a certain rate that's set forth in the agreement. And so that's basically it.
So how soon do you think the Council will let you hire someone?
Well, I went before them last Tuesday, and they approved it.
The rest of this year?
Yeah. And then during budget tomorrow, we'll work out, because all of this happened after I'd submitted the budget for my office. So they're aware of that, and they'll approve, you know, a transfer into a full-time line item in my budget for 2020.
Very good.
And I've already distributed the job posting to, you know, to HR and to Work One and to.
Do you know what the salary's going to be?
$36,721.
$36,721. Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for contractual services with Steve Minnick.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you.
You know, the other thing, by doing it this way, when I do get someone new, Steve would be around to sort of help in the transition. So, and I have to say that I really, really appreciate the services of Steve Minnick that we've had the benefit of for the last eight years, and we're sorry to see him go.
Yeah, he will be missed.
Yes.
Thank you, Mark. Okay. Ordinance for first reading, ordinance number 2019-018. New fund for HPP. That's for health, I believe.
There's more Commissioners. Jamie Bane, Administrator of the Health Department. This is money we've been receiving all along. It's, I don't know, I'm not really privy on the details. My bookkeeper's been working on it. They switched the fund number at the state level, which is requiring us to put a profit here as well, and create a new fund to house the money, even though it's the same division, same ongoing grant that we've had. I believe Steve, his craft has been made aware.
Yeah. This might bring up a good time for us, Steve, that mentioned the ordinance that we have gone.
Yeah, the grant ordinance.
I'm going to have to resend it to, I think some of the department heads were not aware that we have to actually ask the Commissioners to. It's something that we, every audit, the county gets wrote up for because of departments applying for grants, and they're not actively reporting to the auditor how they spend their grant money. And so the Commissioners and auditor are responsible for that grant funds, even though a certain department gets it, we're still responsible for it. And so this new ordinance that you passed last year has sat in motion, things that actually I think it'll make the accounting a lot better, and make the departments that are applying for these grants held accountable for the money that they're receiving.
We do love those federal, and John, it's mostly just the federal that ordinance covers. Is that right, Steve?
Yes.
Yes. See for grants.
So it's just something, maybe we need to do another email or something, remind them that anytime they apply, that they need to come to us first. The auditor.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance 2019-018.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Jimmy, does this need to approve now?
The sooner is better, yes.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2019-018.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Jane. Okay, department heads, elected officials. John?
Yes. The Commissioners have received requests from the Convention Tourism Commission to bring their employees into the, as county employees, for insurance and benefit purposes at the suggestion of the State Board of Accounts Auditor. I've had a meeting with Mr. Mansfield. I've taken a look at the statute. I've provided information to the Commissioners on how they should be treated. I couldn't find anything in the statute that required the county to treat the Convention Visitor Bureau employees as county employees, as there are in other departments, like the Extension Service and Community Corrections, that sort of thing. There also is a statute that obligates the Convention Visitor Bureau to pay all their expenses out of Convention Visitor Bureau income. So even if they would come in, they would still be responsible for paying all their own expenses, similar to what we do with the city employees that are at the 911 Center.
Community prisoners.
So, yeah, it doesn't seem to have any basis for it. I can't understand why the State Board of Accounts was even offering legal advice in the first place. I don't know what her justification was. So I couldn't find anything that said one way or the other, so that's a policy decision up to the Commissioners.
I don't know. I'm worried that we start paying for their insurance, and then one of the employees have a major medical event that we end up having to pay for. I would like to table this.
Listen, there.
And I spoke with Jenny about it. She's going to take a look at some issues that we discussed, and I'd like to wait before we do anything with this.
That's something we could ask Pam, too, down in HR.
Absolutely.
If we'd be able to track those expenses as they came in or something.
I know. Yes, there's a capability of tracking those things, but we're doing it now.
I mean, the major like he's talking about.
Yeah, with us being self-insured, we have to pay a certain amount before the insurance actually kicks in. And I know it was up $200,000.
It's $200,000.
That we have to pay up to $200,000. That's the reason why we got out of letting everybody piggyback off of us, because they were paying a certain amount, but they wasn't paying up to their $200,000, and the county was actually paying that for them. And I don't want to go back into that. That's the reason why we removed those in the first place. So what I would like to find out, are we going to be obligated, if they don't have the money to pay that $200,000? Because, you know, that's going to be coming out of the county's pocket and not the Visitor Bureau. So I don't like Shannon. I would like to find this out with our insurance carrier, and maybe you could get with Jim and John, Pam, and figure this out, because I don't want the county getting stuck with the bill, say, two people end up sick at the same time. That's $400,000 that the county's going to have to be paying out. So I would like to find this out before I move forward with any of it.
I'm going to make a comment. I don't know this quite. But is this something that's going to open a can of worms as far as our interlocal agreements that we have before with?
Speaking of the money.
With the, well, the fairgrounds.
State your name and pin.
Oh, Pam, the Human Resources.
Thanks, John.
I got so.
Yeah, you can, yeah. But we had an interlocal agreement with the airport, San Antonio.
Right, and we removed that.
And we removed all them. So if we bring one back, they're all going to.
John, could you get with the State Board of Accounts?
Yeah, that's what I said.
Sure.
And see, I'm guessing this directive was probably, was it Heath, Stephanie?
Yeah, I think that's who it was.
Could you get ahold of her and see if she can show you?
Sure.
A statue that would require us to do this?
Yep, I'll be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to put that, hold that, make the motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table this.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Any other department heads, please?
Yes, ma'am. Nate Jones, Delaware County Veterans Affairs. Today, the reason that I'm bringing this to you is that our Delaware County stand-down in Resource Fair is coming up here at the end of September. I wanted to invite all of the Commissioners and anybody else that wants to be involved. It's really a great event. It's probably one of the largest veterans events that we have all year long. We should have a lot of different services. Our goal is not to just give hands out, but to also give these guys an opportunity to be successful out here in the real world. So, you know, we'll be providing haircuts, medical and dental checkups, comfort items, community services, VA programs and services, food, clothing, blankets, education, training, and employment. Keep in mind that we truly only have probably somewhere between four to eight veterans that are truly, truly homeless. When I say homeless, I mean living under a bridge or in some other area. In most cases, our veterans are either cowchopping, or sleeping in a car, or whatever the case may be. So if there are any veterans that are truly homeless, we will get them off the street that day. We will find them housing, and we have the opportunity to actually get them their own personal housing with vouchers. So I just want to bring that out, so.
You know, Nate, we appreciate what you and Ralph do, but if a veteran just wants to fellowship.
Absolutely. So we're going to have all sorts of different groups. We'll have mental health services there. We'll have different organizations that just have veteran groups. I know that, I don't know if you have spoke to any individual people, but.
Last year, we served 143 veterans. This year, we're looking at somewhere around 200. We currently have about 80 different vendors that have signed on. Our limit is going to be right at 100. We appreciate the Commissioners provide to, for providing us the Heartland Building and the fairgrounds. We used to have this at the Muncie Mission, but since Nate and his office took over, actually, the Delaware County Veterans Affairs Office is the only county-level office in the state of Indiana that hosts this event, that runs this event, okay? All of the other ones, especially in the northern Indiana healthcare system area, is supported or hosted by other civilian agencies. So we're the only ones that do this. This event this year, last year was the biggest veteran event ever held, we are told, in Delaware County. And this year's event is going to be bigger. I would encourage you to come on out, and let me invite the Commissioners to our next meeting, which is this Friday at 1:00 at the Delville American Legion. We switch back and forth every couple of times to, from Delville to Selma Legion. They provide lunch at Delville. I would recommend the tenderloin. They make a great canned bread and tenderloin. That's what I'll be having, so come out early and join us. But no, this is a fantastic event, and we look forward to putting this on. We have many great sponsors in the area, and just to name a few, and I apologize because I know we'll leave some out, but WLBC will be broadcasting from the event this year at Wolf Boom Radio. Nate and I have already did an interview with them. If you haven't heard it, it's going to be on the radio. Lunch will be provided by Amazing Joes and Barking Cow. We've had monetary donations from.
Multiple different.
Yeah, multiple different organizations, but we could not do this without the support. We've actually brought in somewhere around $4,000 to help offset the cost for this event. So we get great community support.
Ralph, while you're there, why don't you give a shout-out about your education programs you've got going on? Because we sure need those jobs filled out there.
Yeah, actually, we're the only, also, again, the only veteran service office in the state of Indiana that does, in addition to claims and the veteran side benefits, employment and education. So we do, we actually have 10 work studies, veterans who are going to school, working part-time out of our office. In our office, in Nate's office, we actually have more people paid by the VA than by the county. So we have 10 work studies, and as of today, a work assessment, which all 11 of those are paid by the VA, those come out of the education program. So we help veterans, not only veterans, but their dependents through the education process of entering and completing post-secondary education and training programs.
Very good. Thank you so much.
I've attended this stand-down a few times. I was out commissioned a couple times, and this really is a great service to the veterans. The fairgrounds seems like it's a little better out there. It's not as chopped up.
No, it's a lot better.
And I just, I was out there last year, and it's very impressive what you guys have put together for the veterans of this community, and I just want to say thank you and good job.
I would like to mention one other thing. We are going to have a proclamation be read, but obviously, if one of you three would be willing to do that, we'd greatly appreciate it. The other thing we are going to do at the beginning of the year, what we're noticing is an influx of veterans coming from surrounding counties. And the one thing we try not to do is to turn a veteran away regardless. And so we are actually going to set up a self-service desk slash computer, so that if a veteran needs to get something done immediately, and is not able to meet with one of us individually right then and there, they can at least start the process and get the ball rolling with some of that stuff. So that's something to kind of look forward to in the beginning of the year, so.
And we don't want to forget this Mary Eastep.
And, yeah, she was the original person that headed this whole operation up. Her, along with the Colonial Dames, Dollars of the American Revolutionary War, they were the civilian group that really headed this up originally. And just over the last couple of years, we've decided to pick it up and take over.
Do you remember what year that started? How many years?
I think we're in our 11th year. It's either 10th or 11th year. Yep.
Well, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Good job, Matt.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Paul Singleton, Director of Delaware County 911. Back in, I believe it was October of 18, the Commissioners approved for, we applied for a grant, and that grant has been received, and we have permission to go forward on that grant. What you have before you is a summary from the consultant that the Commissioners have hired to assist with this. I understand, and I appreciate that was done because of the amount of this. And so now we just have to figure out how we're going to, where the money's going to come from. The total project would be $1,395,000. The federal grant will reimburse $630,000 of that. I have, in my state, 1222 account, which is the state 911 account. And we haven't had a capital payment for the last two or three years since I've been there, so I've been careful not to spend that money on something else. So we'll be able to put $350,000 with that. So this is a reimbursement grant, so it needs to be paid upfront. This project will not even, they're in the process of rewriting the contracts specific to what we need. And on the front page, there's going to be language that Delaware County will no longer be responsible for the 911 network and selected routing fee, nor the 911 database management fee. That's money that the state 911 board is picking up. So over 10 years, I will save us $722,000 that we won't have to pay. I am proposing that we do this in a lump sum payment, if the funds are available, that will save any financing cost. As part of this, we, on the 10-year, we have a five-year equipment refresh. So this will put the 911 center in a great position for the next 10 years, once we get this done. Even if the contract is signed this year, they won't get started till late this year or even the first quarter of next year. The project does not have to be paid for until it's done and working over. So it'll be, either be the first quarter of 2020 or the second quarter of 2020 that we'd have to come up with this payment. quarter of 2020, that we'd have to come up with this payment term.
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
That's a very detailed work set up now to find the money next year.
I just think this is a great opportunity.
Oh, yes.
Reimbursement. So, we've got a new radio system. We've got an outstanding building. We're looking, our next project down the road will possibly be a CAD software upgrade to the latest. You know, we did all this down. We're in great shape for the next number of years. And as on a side note, the PD/HR company, our air finish to back up, I want to thank you for allowing us to get that done quickly.
John, if the city stays with 911, will they have to pay half of what this is gonna cost?
I believe so. I think under the interlocal agreement that was drafted back in 2011, that would, they would have an obligation to come up with the other $750,000, $760,000, whatever the number is.
I do know that the money that I spend out of the 1222 account, which is the state account, that we can't bill the city for, any of that money. That's.
Right, but whatever's left over that we would have to pay.
Yeah, that's above my pay grade for, I guess, to figure out.
I've not heard from the city at all, and I don't know that it's ever been discussed in the 911 Board of Meeting, when you've had them, as to the city's plans and how the city intends to move forward with their own dispatching. I know it was discussed when we talked with the, their new ambulance service director, and she was kind of surprised that they were pulling out. So, I don't know where this all stands with regard to the city.
Yeah. When is the next 911 Board meeting?
Next Wednesday.
Yeah, next Wednesday, 1:00, third, no, it's 3:30.
Oh, it's the third.
Oh, yeah, 3:30, third Wednesday. And the 911 Board is aware of this project. It
has been discussed with the 911 Board. And as for as a date, I've not heard any more from the city as to when they are planning on starting their EMS service.
Because the letter we received from the city November is when.
November 26, I think it was.
Our agreement is down with them.
And I think before we can dispatch it, we need to be aware of who's going to be their backup, and who's gonna do their intercepts. That's a biggie for us as far as dispatching. I don't think there's any way we could dispatch that till we get that in writing.
And it's.
We're working on it.
Slowly, but surely.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Anybody else on this? Anybody else? Any elected officials or department heads? If not, we'll move down to the payments at claim of $1,595,309.45.
Make a motion to pay payment lines.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Okay, now the time for the questions from the public comment. You're limited to three minutes. Please sign in, leave your name. We have someone looking.
Hi there. My name is Jeff Waters. One year ago today, I contracted West Nile, and I was told I wasn't even gonna be here. And I'm here today to, hopefully, you guys will start spraying for mosquitoes, publicizing anything you can about West Nile. I was paralyzed for seven months, and lay in a nursing home for 100 days. And if we can just save one life out of this, it's worth it. I just want to, you know, I'm trying to get the public to know about West Nile. It's something that nobody knows about, and everybody needs to know. And there's just no publicity about it. The Star Press came out with it, but I had to contact them. And then Channel 13 did contact me about it, but that's still not enough. And I just beg for you guys to please publicize this, fog for mosquitoes, whatever you can do for me. I would be so grateful. But God has blessed me and brought me through this. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Jamie, could you answer some questions from the public? Jamie, as I tell people, we appoint your board. I think the mayor has the appointment.
No, the mayor doesn't.
We have to pay. And we, like, when we appoint members to these boards, we have some 25, 26 boards that we appoint to, we don't tell them how to do it. But we do like for them to, we receive your minutes, and we appreciate that. I was disappointed to find out that you did not have funds to spray this summer. I can appreciate that. But what kind of a budget do you need to do something like spraying again?
What we're talking about is gonna be what we term as a vector control program. So, the concept of spraying and fogging is, the effect it has is very minimal when it comes down to it, unless you want a massive program. And by that, I'm talking about, currently we own one fogger. We would need to increase that to probably maybe five. I would probably need an additional, at least two full-time staff throughout the summer. Actually, it's gonna be more than that. Picture trucks driving throughout the county at 5 to 10 miles an hour. Every time you pass a house, you provide roughly 24 hours of mosquito control for that home. So, how many times would you want us to pass each and every house in order to provide them mosquito control? And you can do the math on how many times that truck's gonna have to go through, how many trucks are gonna be needed for every mile of the county roads and city roads. The chemical that's used is roughly $11,000 for a 55-gallon drum. It's been years since we've ever had a program that burned through those sufficiently to be considered like a full-scale program. But to put that in perspective, Muncie Sanitary District runs, I believe, or they previously ran, I believe, one or two foggers, and they went through at least one drum per summer. That's just through the city. And again, keep in mind, that's, if I sat down with some GIS maps and plotted it out, we could see how many trucks we would need and how many times through every neighborhood. But it's part of a larger program, that the primary focus of that program has to be people preventing the breeding of mosquitoes. That's been the core of everything we put out every year for voting mosquito control. The problem we run into there is a lot of finger pointing. We'll get calls of people saying that mosquitoes are terrible in their yard, and we'll ask them if they've cleaned out their gutters, for example. And no, that's, it shouldn't be their responsibility to do that. It's the response we get, that we need to be spraying. And I try to have the conversation, letting them know that I can come through and I can spray, but just because you see my truck one time doesn't mean I gave you anything more than 24 hours of reduction in mosquito population. In addition to that, there's another aspect of a vector control program called larva sighting, which we do continue to do larva sighting program. That's to address spots where mosquitoes are breeding that's not necessarily an individual's responsibility, like a gutter or ornamental pond. So, we do ditches, we do abandoned swimming pools. If there are areas of bad standing water that's kind of swampy, we'll try to treat those areas. That's a simple thing that gets a lot of, it's a lot of bang for the buck. So, one treatment on an abandoned pool at the beginning of a season, we can stop it from breeding mosquitoes the entire summer.
So, it is education. So, could maybe next spring, I hope this frost will be coming for too long, but could we do some education as such? Because you bring up a good point. We can't do the whole county, but there's things that we could do on educating people, how they could be our.
Yeah, we issue press releases each year. I suppose we could try to budget for advertising
Or just coming to this meeting and, you know, getting the word out that it's their responsibility, not ours. But I do appreciate the city doing parks, probably, and you do in there, you have abandoned those spots of, all these. Now, with the stormwater, if that fluctuates and goes dry, I mean, do you treat those?
Any dry area, if we need water to stand for basically over seven days.
Seven days.
We don't really try to determine whether that's true or not. We go out and have a look. Usually, you can just tell by looking whether an area is prone to being for standing water. And that's one other detail. We did, up until this past summer, this past summer, we did not spray at major events. So, the fairgrounds around the Fourth of July, we would go out and spray those areas to provide kind of a knockdown of mosquitoes during like a high-profile, large-population event.
Yeah.
We went to Morris Meadows a couple of times with their request.
Yeah.
This past year, we did not. We are down to myself being the only licensed applicator. Hopefully, we can get someone else licensed for next summer and purchase some more of the chemical.
Maybe a part-time summer student, if I were talking.
That's possible. Yeah, we've, I mean, it gets into a whole budget discussion of how our budget has dwindled over the years, and no fault of anyone locally, really. But we have to drop the non-required programs, and vector control is one that is not required.
Okay, I can appreciate that. Well, thank you very much for explaining this. Anybody else? entertain a motion for recess.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you.